Yep. Yep. Are we, are we on? We are, marvelous. All right. And, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November the 7th Planning, Camden Planning Board Meeting. We, first of all, we've got several applications to review tonight. And the first thing we need to do is just to make sure we have a quorum. So, do we have half of our full body of the planning board? More than half?
Yeah.
Yes. Do we need to have a motion so that we can proceed?
You need to appoint Richard as a voting member.
Oh, yeah.
Because he's an alternate.
Okay. So...
Need a motion on that?
Yeah.
Pros and cons?
I second.
Pros and cons? That's gonna go on forever.
We're gonna be efficient here, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Second the motion.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Yes, Richard, the four voting member.
Good try.
All right. You don't want to get out of here, do you? And we, do we have jurisdiction? I believe we do. Right?
Yep.
Okay. Super, and does the applicant have standing?
They, they showed their standing.
Last time?
Last time, but they also submitted a deed.
Okay. So, we're clear on that. Okay. So, we have jurisdiction and standing to move forward, then? Make a motion that we have jurisdiction and standing? We have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's five zero. Okay, terrific. So, the first thing we're reviewing tonight is a minor subdivision for three lots on Colcord Avenue. And I believe Jim Dorsky is going to introduce the project for us. Jim?
So, for a moment, you all wait for it. I'm Jim Dorsky with Garland Dorsky, representing Camden RXL on their application for a minor subdivision on Colcord Avenue. It's a three lot subdivision. We came and started this back in April with a pre-application meeting. There's an existing, existing use, an existing commercial building on Lot 1. And the owner's proposing to divide the property into three lots. So, the Lot 1's already developed, and the other two lots don't have any proposed development at this time. He's just gonna put the lots on the market and sell them as is. So, any potential development that'll happen there will have to come before the planning board for site plan review, because it's in the industrial district and, and only commercial uses are allowed. So, any development that does happen, you know, that development will be, you'll have an opportunity to review that development at that time.
Okay.
That's pretty much it.
Thank you. I mean, we've, we've, we've seen this already. This is final, so thank you. That's terrific. So, I think the first thing we have to do is find the application complete. Has everybody, I know Jeremy's reviewed this and has found that it's complete. Has everybody else on the planning board had a chance to review this? Do they consider that the application is complete?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes? Okay. So, I would make a motion that we find that the submission is complete for the Colcord Avenue subdivision. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. So, I think at this point, we need to move on to the site plan review criteria and go through those.
Well, maybe we need to discuss the project a little bit.
Okay.
Sure. And the, the public comment goes in before you start to do this?
Right.
Okay. All right, so let's, so at this point, it's time for public comments. Is that what you're saying, Jeanie?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I, nobody else can see this except us, Jim. I wonder if maybe if you'd just pulled it back a bit, then anybody who's here could... Is there anybody, is everybody just connected to the project? Okay? Does that say, okay, everybody here is just in, okay?
We're all this.
Do we have any public comments on the project?
I've got no public.
One's been written in, right?
So, we have a written comment that I need to read. It's from one of our planning board members who can't be here tonight. From Ethan Shaw, so I'll, I'll read it out for the record. "To the planning board, I'm sorry I can't be there with you tonight. I wanted to share some concerns regarding the Colcord Avenue subdivision. While I do not oppose the subdivision generally, I do have concerns where the subdivision and subsequent development of the Colcord Avenue parcels will affect the residential properties in the neighborhood. Because the industrial zone borders on the village residential district, special consideration ought to be paid to the traffic flow along Colcord Avenue, in particular that heavy traffic associated with industrial uses, such as large 18-wheelers, dump trucks, and the like. As I raised in the informal meeting on the plan, the heavy industrial traffic from Union to Lime Rock along Colcord has resulted in significant damage to the infrastructure where Colcord joins Union. I'm attaching a few photos that show the location. If not the impact, the holes are filled with leaves of this traffic. Over the past year, I can count no fewer than three times an 18-wheeler has gotten stuck trying to make the turn and having a wheel fall in one of the holes. This heavy traffic also affects the integrity of the foundations of the residential properties along Colcord Avenue, and indeed, the quiet enjoyment of property-for-all residences in the proximity of the industrial zone. I urge the board to consider this impact in its deliberations and suggest that conditions be imposed to limit the traffic to flow from Union to Lime Rock, which is designed to handle this heavy traffic, and not the side streets, which include Colcord and Virginia avenues, as well as Park Street and Curtis Avenue between US Route 1 and Union Street. It may be that going forward, we would want to work with the town of Rockport and the state to redesign the sharp turn at Lime Rock Union, where Hammond Lumber is, which is probably the main reason this heavy industrial traffic is routing down Colcord Ave. Finally, I would condition the approval on prohibiting any removal of the existing trees or screening along both the Lime Rock and Colcord boundaries of the property, and encourage the board to consider additional screening, possibly better addressed at any later site plan review for any proposed development. Thank you for all for your consideran, consideration. Ethan Shaw, planning board member in abstentia and resident at Forty Union in Colcord." That's the only public comment we have. These are some of the photographs he attached to this with evidence of the holes that are filled with leaves, but...
There's a lot of those around town right now.
Looks much different than any other road in town.
So, what are your thoughts on... Can we discuss this now, Jeanie? Is that an appropriate time to...
You could enter comments in that would be used as testimony later when you...
Shall we start working through the approval criteria and...
Your choice.
Address this when we get to...
Either, either place.
Well...
We could discuss it if...
Yeah, let's discuss it a little bit further.
Yeah.
And, you know, if we have questions.
Sure.
First question I have is, I know from, from last time to now, what's taken so much time? You working on boundary agreements?
Exactly.
Can you discuss those a little bit?
So, there were, you'll see on the plan, the, I mean, the preliminary plan didn't have the final boundaries on it. It didn't show as much detail on what was on the adjoining lots. You'll notice now, like, on the Rankin's lot, that building that's there was actually encroaching over the property line onto our client's property. And likewise, the Coastal Workshops property had an encroachment of some pavement and a planter there. So, he just decided to make things simple and easy with the neighbors to just do a boundary line agreement and adjust the lines to accommodate those. So, we got boundary line agreements with both of those two properties, and there's copies of those agreements in the package.
I saw the agreement. So, what you, what you did is you just deeded the land to it? You did, or was there a...
It was in the form of a boundary line agreement. But the effect of that is that our client granted anything he owned on the opposite side of those lines to the neighbors. They granted any rights to land they may have had on our side, to us, to our client. So, it wasn't a one-way, like, quitclaim deed. It was technically a boundary line agreement. But it did position the line, we believe, closer to our client's property or onto our client's property from where the original record property line was.
And Jim, do these, the latest survey amount that we have reflects that new line?
Yes, it does.
So, on Rankin's property there, they've got, behind their building, they've got a driveway?
Well...
That is...
It doesn't, when you, actually, I went out, they have used that. I think they used it for putting snow there, actually, is all it was. There's not really much in the way, I'm not sure there's even any gravel down there. It was just a cleared area where I think they've pushed snow historically.
Well, it's... But the, the whole area that's drawn in there, is that, what, what is that that's drawn in there?
It's just a traveled way.
That's it?
Yeah. Where they believe it was just used for depositing snow.
But that's, so that's not in use for, for Rankin's anymore?
No. Well, if they had, you know, if they would theoretically have gained any prescriptive rights or anything like that from having done that for any period of time, they wouldn't have them now, because they released any rights they had on this, on our client's side of the property line in the boundary line agreement.
That's just fine. You have other questions?
Yeah. Not at the moment, I don't know.
Okay. Do you have any other, anything?
About the project in general, the boundary line?
Questions about, before we get going through the criteria?
No, I reviewed the criteria. I think it's complete. I understand everything.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay.
Thanks for asking.
Shall we start going through the approval criteria, then? Okay, I believe Jim has given us, as part of the submittal, he's given us a summary of his responses to these. So, I'll just start, do you want me to, shall I read these out, Jeanie? Yes, okay. So, Section 1, Pollution. A, the state standard, the proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution. In making the determination, the board shall at least consider the elevation of the land above sea level and its relation to floodplains, the nature of soils and subsoils and their ability to adequately support waste disposal, the slope of the land and its effect on effluence, the availability of streams for disposal of effluence, and the applicable state and local health and water resources rules and regulations. Jim's response to this is that this is not applicable. This subdivision does not propose any new development or improvements at that time.
Yeah, I agree. And they, any developments proposed will come before us in slight plan review.
Okay, so, they make a motion that we approve, that we, we accept that they've met the criteria for Section 1 pollution?
Not that they've met it.
It doesn't apply, excuse me, it doesn't apply. Okay. Do we need to have a motion and second that?
Just that you agree with the applicant that this item does not apply, or something like that?
So, they make a motion that we agree with the applicant, this item does not apply?
I second.
All those in favor? Aye, that's five zero. Okay, Section 2, sufficient water. Oh, and under performance standards, which is also not applicable in this case for number one, it just says we're not discharging wastewater or stormwater without a license from the main DP.
Don't need to worry about those.
Okay. Okay. So, Section 2, sufficient water. We need to, the state standard is that the proposed subdivision has sufficient water available for the reasonably foreseeable needs of the subdivision. And Jim's response is that water service will be supplied by the main water company. Lot 1 is already developed and connected to a six-inch water main in Lime Rock Street. Lots 2 and 3 will also be serviced by main water company and may be connected to either the existing two-inch water line main in Colcord Avenue or the six-inch water main in Lime Rock Street, depending on the demand of the future development of these lots. And I believe there's also a letter from the main water company backing that up. We don't need to, do we need to read the letter out? Okay. Does anybody have any concerns about Section 2?
No.
Okay.
Find the applicant meets, meets the criteria of Section 2, sufficient water.
And second that?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so, five zero. We've met requirements for Section 2. Section 3. Municipal water supply.
Isn't that the same as Section 2?
I guess. And it says, "See letter from main water company." So, it's just, the state standard is that the, the proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on an existing water supply if one is to be used. And we have a letter from main water stating that that's the case. Everybody just note that in the letter.
It does mention the two-inch main, Colcord Avenue may not be sufficient. So, just note it, Jeanie.
So, they may, okay. So, they may have, do we want to put that in our findings of fact?
Well, he's already got it stated with the six-inch in Lime Rock and the two-inch in Colcord. So, if the two is insufficient, he has the six, he can tap into it.
Okay. So, so we make a motion that we meet the criteria, this project meets the criteria for Section 3 municipal water supply?
Yes.
Was there anything for fire protection?
That's in the previous one.
That would be Chris's letter. That's part of...
That's part of the water, adequate water supply, sufficient water.
Do we need to go through all the performance standards of these? Because I just read the state standard, but there's no... Development proposed, but do we need to go through each of the performance standards, Jeanie?
I would say that that's gonna come during site plan more whether or not it's adequate. That's one of the criteria.
Developed.
So...
Depends on what they're proposing to do.
Because there's no development.
Okay. We don't need to address it specifically at this time.
Right.
So, does that make sense?
Yes.
You should reference Chris's letter, though, about fire suppression. Because that's part of...
Make a motion there. Somebody got that letter in front of them.
Well, let's see. No, I've got just main water.
Here's a, here's a packet.
I think you should have given us some more stuff here.
Oh. No, that was cornerstone.
Found it? No.
I've got it here.
Thank you.
I've got the police department. It was number one. Commissioner.
Yeah, here it is.
Solid waste.
Who's that?
Should we go through each one of these?
Water, that's what we're looking for right now, isn't it? The letter from main water to reference, aren't we?
No. Jim provided that one.
Fire department.
We would just use Chris's letter about fire, because that's not our water.
Okay. Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Aye, Anne.
So, that's interesting. So, I'm looking at the slight, site plan review form here. And Chris is saying, are we seeing this from the fire department? And he's saying that the water supply appears adequate. The proposed entrances are designed for ease of emergency vehicle access. Access from the existing street appears to be designed for safety. He doesn't anticipate any significant problems, and he doesn't need to discuss it with us. So, I think we can...
So, recovered there.
Yeah.
So, I think, yeah.
Fire protection, sufficient water.
Yeah. So, is that, is that what we want to reference for Section 3? His letter, that's what you're saying?
As long as it's in the record that you referenced it with regard to water supply, I think it doesn't matter where it goes.
Okay. So, I'd make a motion that this project meets the requirements for municipal water supply, based on that. And it's been, the fire chief has determined that it meets the approval criteria.
Anne, there's no proposed development.
And there's no proposed development.
I second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's five zero. Okay. Move on to Section 4, erosion. State standard, the proposed subdivision shall not cause unreasonable sedimentation or reduction in the land's capacity to hold water so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition exists. I'm just gonna read through the performance standards here, just, right, so...
Your choice.
Yeah?
I would say it's probably unnecessary, because this is unapplicable, because there's, there's no...
No change.
Does anybody feel like, yeah? Okay, somebody, does anybody...
I move that it's not applicable, as there is no change in the, no change or disturbance of the soil.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye, five zero. Number 5. Traffic, the state standard, the proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of the highways or public roads existing or proposed. And if the proposed subdivision requires driveways or entrances onto a state or state-aid highway located outside the urban compact area of an urban compact municipality as defined by MRSA Title 23, Section 754. The Department of Transportation has provided documentation indicating that the driver or entrances conform to MRSA Title 23, Section 704, and any rules under that section. They make a...
Everybody knows that section.
All right. We, I read it before bed every night. Okay. So, can I make a motion that this isn't applicable, because this proposal, this subdivision doesn't propose any new development or improvements at this time?
And then with the caveat, that'll be addressed certainly at a later time, when there's development.
When there's development, it will go through, again, through site plan.
Yeah, well, the development does. I mean, it creates three separate lots, so there will obviously be increased traffic in the future. So, uh, but, that's with the understanding that when they are developed, it will be going through site plan review.
Right. I submit that now is a time to look forward to making any changes in the traffic infrastructure, as was brought forth in the letter that we received.
And this would be an appropriate time, so...
You know, it, it would be easier to put it off until the, one of the lots is brought up to us. But planning ahead makes much more sense. And the sort of planning that takes, it's gonna be necessary, it's gonna take time, too, if we're dealing with both the state and the town of Rockport for help in augmenting the problem that is clearly there in integrating an industrial neighborhood, albeit very small, with an established residential community or neighborhood. So, I think, I'd wanna get something in there that raises a flag, to some extent, as opposed to like, go ahead, guys, and we'll maybe get it next time, when there might be completely new people on here, and it won't have the amount of scrutiny that we've given to it. That was the discussion item for you guys to respond.
Do you mind if I make, is it all right if I make a comment? I would just say that since we have absolutely no idea what's gonna go on these lots, and because there are uses allowed that would require extremely little traffic, like, someone wants to store some equipment there and only go in there and move it out, and, you know, take it out in the spring and put it back in the fall, even, something like that, that would have very little effect on traffic. And if you're talking about looking at some bigger study and changing dramatically how the use would be on that street, that the fact that, you know, our client, who just wants to split this property up into three lots, you know, hopefully wouldn't be, you know, have to be, have his project put aside, you know, because of that, that, you know, when site plan review happens, and when you figure out what's gonna happen on these lots, I think that would be the time to consider what those uses are and how much traffic there will be, and, and whether or not a project like that would, would require some major change in, you know, your requirements for how traffic flows through there.
Well, apparently, there's already a problem, as was cited in that letter. But then again, I can't attribute that problem, it's present to your client. So, it's sort of between a...
Well, like, I, I'm saying, you've got an existing condition that maybe, maybe it should have been addressed already, you know, maybe not. But what I'm saying is, is there are potential uses for this property that would have a negligible effect on what the existing condition is. It's possible that that's what will happen here.
I kind of agree, especially with the size of the lots that you're proposing. It's, and how much traffic could you actually...
Right. They're on, one of them's under an acre, and, I mean...
And, and there's a perception that some of the damage to the road has been from industrial traffic. But do we actually have any solid evidence that that's the case?
Well, the letter said they saw, what, three incidents this year of a truck, 18-wheeler being stuck in one of those holes. That's evidence.
Well, that's evidence that there's a, I wouldn't say that's evidence that the truck's causing it. It's evidence that the road needs some work done to it. I mean, I, you know, my, my road's got, you know, my, my road could use some work, too.
It's a townwide problem.
Yeah.
That's a townwide problem. You know, we've got trucks cutting across streets, every side street in this town, to avoid downtown, so it's not unique.
I mean, that's...
So, I, I would, I would move that...
It doesn't apply.
That at this time, it doesn't apply, but in future development, it should be looked at.
Yes.
And would apply.
Yeah.
Is that just noted in the minutes, or does that go with the approval?
Site plan approval, because it's industrial. So, no matter what they do, they have to come back before us, and we review traffic standards at that point.
It's an automatic requirement that's built into your ordinance already, basically.
Traffic proposed, so there's no traffic to evaluate.
We don't really have anything to address yet.
No. We're itching to address it, though, aren't we?
Right there when you come back.
I think that's the point we were trying to make.
It would be certainly something to take upon us at a later date. So, at this time, in terms of this particular application, I think we move on in terms of the, the application. But it's something we need to address, and we've addressed it both in the workshop and also earlier in the preliminary.
So, the motion is currently, we, we consider it not applicable at this time, and it will be upon further development.
Right. That was your motion?
My motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
And that was, that was the motion.
That was the motion.
I like that motion.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Get that, Jeanie? With us, okay. Number 6, sewage disposal.
Public sewer available.
Where does that start?
You have a letter.
You have a letter for that, I'm sure.
Letter. So, according to the wastewater letter from the superintendent, existing sewer lines are adequate to handle wastewater from the proposed development. Proposed sewer lines are adequately designed and located, anticipate no significant problems, and they would, would not like to discuss the proposed subdivision any further.
Okay. And, and Jim's comments on this, that the lots within the subdivision will be serviced by the public sewer system. Lot 1 is already developed and connected to an eight-inch sewer main in Lime Rock Street. Lots 2 and 3 will connect to the existing eight-inch sewer main in Colcord Avenue. And also see the email from Camden Wastewater Superintendent, which we've just talked about.
He submitted an additional letter.
It says email there, instead of a letter.
And there's, there's another one, do we, okay.
The back of his packet.
Found it? The additional one? Does anybody?
Here.
Oh, that letter.
Got it, right, there it is.
I'm gonna read this out for the record. Hi, Dave, thanks for taking my call this, oh, hi, Jim, the wastewater treatment plant and collection system have the capacity to collect and treat the wastewater from this Colcourt Avenue subdivision, Dave Bolstich, Superintendent, Town of Camden Wastewater Department. And the date of that was.
Over twenty seconds.
October the 22nd. Okay. So, do we need a motion? We need a motion.
I move that section six sewage disposal is adequate for uses on site, but there's no proposed development at this time.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, five zero. Okay, number seven. Try and. Okay, so the, the, the state standard is a proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on the municipality's ability to dispose of solid waste if municipal services are to be utilized, Jim's response to this is that it's not applicable because this subdivision does not propose any new development or improvements at this time. Does anybody on the board have questions about that or disagree?
No, don't disagree.
The motion that it's not applicable, section seven municipal solid waste disposal is not applicable, based on the fact that there's no subdivision proposed at this time.
No development.
No development. This is a subdivision.
That would be a Freudian slip, as they say, so no development.
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero. Section eight, aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. Let's read that. Okay, so the state standard is that the proposed subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area aesthetics, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, or the municipality, rare and irreplaceable natural areas, or any public rights for physical or visual access to the shoreline. And Jim's response to this is that this is not applicable because this subdivision does not propose any new development or improvements at this time. Is everybody?
Motion, section eight is not applicable, in terms of the aesthetic, cultural, and natural values, that the, there's no development proposed at this time.
Good motion.
Second.
Mark still reading?
Yeah, give me just a minute to catch up on this here.
Okay, that's fine.
Good.
So, do we have a second?
A second.
A second, all those in favor? Aye. Section nine, financial and technical capacity. The developer, we just, the state standard is that the developer has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the standards of this section, and Jim's response is that this subdivision doesn't propose any new development or improvements at this time, so therefore this is not applicable.
Okay, this is approval criteria.
All right, it's not a subdivision requirement?
Everybody in agreement about that?
Was yours a motion?
No, I haven't quite got that far.
I find section nine, financial, technical capacity, not applicable.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, five zero, approved. Number ten, surface waters, outstanding river sections. It's, the state standard is quite long, so let me just read you, do I need to read the state standard out?
No.
There's a specific list of outstanding river segments, and this is not, in fact, I don't even think the McGunt, but it's one I don't know, but it's.
So you're saying I ought to read this out? No, okay, this isn't applicable, as Jim references.
That's right.
Because it's not, so can I make a propos, can I make a proposal that this is not applic, section ten is not applicable because this proposed subdivision is not adjacent to surface waters or outstanding river segments as defined in section ten?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye, five zero. Section eleven, groundwater, again. I'm gonna, so the state standard wants to ensure that the proposed subdivision will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater. Jim's response is that the proposed subdivision will indeed not alone or in conjunction with existing activities adversely affect the quality or quantity of the groundwater, because the lots will be served by the public water supply, and any development is unlikely to affect groundwater, and any potential effect will be subject to review under site plan review. So, so I make a motion that.
I would say that it meets the requirement because they're relying on town water.
They'd be fine with me.
They're not drilling wells, and I think that's what it's getting, getting to.
Okay.
But town water has something to do with groundwater? I don't see the connection.
The fact that we're using town water means that we won't be affecting the groundwater like we might if we weren't.
They're not drilling a well.
And there's no onsite wastewater disposal, and that.
Right.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion? You have any more questions about this?
Not at the time, I mean, there's no proposed development.
Right.
Good?
Good.
So I propose that section eleven groundwater is not applicable, as this is just a boundary line subdivision at this time.
A second.
Richard?
I, I heard it, yeah, I'm ready to vote.
At work.
Okay, all, all those in favor? Five zero.
I'm the second, I'm sorry.
Did I second that one?
Second it. Section twelve, floodplain areas, this is not a, I would make a motion that this is not applicable because no part of the proposed subdivision is located within a floodprone area, as shown on the FEMA flood insurance rate maps.
Second.
Oh, is that a, hold on a sec, before you make a motion, just based on our previous discussions, that although it's not in the FEMA floodplain, that area floods, it's just something that we should put on the record as this gets divided, as we, as we move forward in terms of development, it is flooding like crazy down there, so we just want to note as people are coming forward, again, just on the record, again, it's not part of a FEMA, it's not on the insurance rate maps, but the area is certainly flooding at this point.
I mean, I would suggest that's a different, this is, I would.
Right.
My understanding of this is this addresses specifically the floodplain, which is a very specific definition that.
Yeah, the standard references the FEMA flood maps, so that's all this is about.
And, and, and I, I think it'd be good.
Then that carries over to the stormwater area?
I think what you're talking about, yeah, more has to do with stormwater, which we are going to address.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
So I have no objection.
But, yeah, we can address that in section fifteen, that's coming up.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would make a motion that section twelve floodplain areas is, is not applicable because no part of the proposed subdivision is located in the floodplain prone area, as shown on the FEMA flood insurance rate maps.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, terrific. Section thirteen, freshwater wetlands. The state standard says all freshwater wetlands within the proposed subdivision have been identified on any maps submitted as part of the application, regardless of the size of these wetlands, any mapping of freshwater wetlands may be done with the help of the local soil and water conservation district. And Jim's response to this is that the wetlands on the property have been delineated according to the 1987 Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual and are shown on the subdivision plan. Are we satisfied?
I am.
That's been.
I.
I mean, we, we discussed this.
But you also wanna make a motion?
You're gonna do it, huh?
Richard, make a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion, under section thirteen freshwater wetlands, the plans show the delineated wetlands of the area according to the 1987 Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye, five zero. Section fourteen, river stream or brook. The state standard says that any river, stream, or brook within or abutting the proposed subdivision has been identified on any maps submitted as part of the application, and for purposes of this section, river, stream, or brook has the same meaning as in Title thirty-eight, Section four, eight, OB, subsection nine. And the, Jim's response is that it's not applicable because there are no river streams or brooks within or adjacent to the subdivision. We all in agreement?
Yes.
Can we, just break for a little discussion on that? Can you explain the drainage ditch back here and give us some insight on?
Oh.
On where that's going?
That's a man-made ditch, it wouldn't, it wouldn't meet the definition of the NRPA definition, I believe that's NRPA, Title thirty-eight.
River streams or brooks, yes, but it may, under the next one, stormwater.
Come under stormwater.
Well, it doesn't apply to this section because it doesn't meet the definition.
Right.
Okay, so I don't know if you wanna address that under the next section?
Sure.
After you vote on this one?
Yeah, good idea, all right, somebody want to make a motion? I mean, does anybody?
Sure.
That is one for the next section.
I propose, section fourteen, river streams and brooks is not applicable, based on the fact that there are no river streams or brooks within or adjacent to this proposed subdivision.
Second that?
Second.
Two seconds, all those in favor? Aye, five zero. Okay, section fifteen, stormwater. So the state standard is that this proposed subdivision will provide for adequate stormwater management, and Jim's response to this is that it's not applicable because this subdivision does not propose any new development or improvements at this time, as stated in note nine on the subdivision plan, this subdivision is located entirely within the industrial zone, which only allows uses that require site plan, plan of approval, therefore, any new development on lots two and three, and certain modifications to, to the development on lot one, will be subject to site plan review by the Town of Camden Planning Board and the requirements set forth in Article twelve of the zoning ordinance of the Town of Camden, Article twelve states that the board may require a stormwater drainage and erosion control plan specifying in part the existing and proposed method of handling stormwater runoff.
So that was basically the note that you all requested at the pre-AT meeting, because the issue of stormwater came up, we talked about the fact that there wasn't any proposed development at this time, but we knew that because it is in the industrial zone, that any new development would require site plan review, and it would, could be subject to the stormwater, how the stormwater would be managed would be reviewed at that time, and so the request you made was that we put some language right on the face of the plan that acknowledged that, and took some language from the site plan review section of the ordinance, which is what I did, I pulled that right out of the site plan review ordinance, some of that language to address it, as you requested, that's the only reason I put that on there, and as far as that drainage ditch goes, I mean, we don't know whether or not any future development will require any stormwater management that would have any effect or use that in any way, whether that ditch will have any bearing on what's done there, again, that's just something that'll, you know, have to be looked at and addressed at that time.
This is where you had comments, wasn't it?
And again, I just appreciate that section nine is now in the general site notes, so thank you for that.
Looks like he's reading stuff still.
Yeah, I mean, I'm good, I mean, there's, there's gonna be no change, I just, my, I, I guess it was more out of curiosity what that drainage ditch is draining, and where is it draining to, and what happens if that's, if that gets capped off? Not that it makes any difference.
We're not proposing to change anything.
I understand that, I, I, I understand that, I'm just discussing it, throwing it out there, that's all. So. I'm fine with it.
I move that section fifteen stormwater does not apply as there's no development proposed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yep.
Aye, five zero. Section sixteen, spaghetti lots prohibited.
Yes.
I move that section sixteen does not apply.
Second that.
All right, all those in favor? Aye, five zero. Section seventeen, lake phosphorus concentration, Jim responds that this is not applicable because the proposed subdivision is not adjacent to a great pond.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Section eighteen, impacts on adjoining municipality, Jim responds that it's not applicable because the proposed subdivision does not cross into a nascent municipality. All in agreement with that?
All in agreement, yeah.
Very good, so I make a motion.
Move that section eighteen does not apply, as far as impacts to adjoining municipalities, the entire property is in the Town of Camden.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, five zero. Section nineteen, land subjects to liquidation harvesting, and Jim says this is not applicable because there's been no timber harvesting within the proposed subdivision. So we need a motion first? Almost, you're good.
She's gonna try to push the third one, though.
So I make a motion that this is not applicable because there's been no timber harvesting within the proposed subdivision, there's no timber on the land to harvest.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. And section twenty, last but not least.
Good point.
Conformity with local ordinances and plans. And we need to, the state standard is that the proposed subdivision conforms with the duly adopted subdivision ordinance, zoning ordinance, floodplain ordinance, a comprehensive plan, and other ordinances included in the municipal code as appropriate, and in making this determination, the municipal reviewing authority may interpret these ordinances and plans, and Jim is arguing that the proposed subdivision and the lots within it meet the requirements of the Town of Camden ordinances. Are we in agreement with this, gentlemen?
Jeremy's reviewed it extensively.
Yeah, so somebody like to make a motion?
That the proposed subdivision and lots meet the requirements of the Town of Camden ordinances in section twenty.
Second.
All those in favor?
Discuss that one first.
Okay, sure.
I'm not questioning that it does, but it's, you know, what are we basing that on? Just because it's here and because we heard Jeremy thought it met the. Is it because it's here and because we heard Jeremy thought it met the...
Like the street frontage?
Yeah.
Lot size.
Right. But we actually haven't reviewed that, have we?
We did before.
Lot size?
It was months ago now, though.
Pre-AT meeting we did, we went through the minimum lot. I've got the table right here of all the requirements, so.
Yeah.
It's a minimum 40,000 square feet. They're all over 40,000. Minimum 200 feet of street frontage, which is a lot, but they do meet that.
That's why you've got the kink in it, yeah.
You could be more specific and say it meets the space and bulk standards of Article 8 for the industrial district. It's the intent of the comprehensive plan with regard to the use of the industrial district because it remains commercial.
I second that motion.
Yeah, good motion.
Are you allowed to make motions?
I'll make that motion.
That's specific and...
Perfect, perfect.
Do we have a second?
Absolutely.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. So now I believe we need to make a motion to approve the whole shebang.
And reference the name of the subdivision and the date of the plan.
So I would make a motion that we find this, that this project, the Colcord Avenue subdivision at 6 and 18 Colcord Avenue meets all the requirements for...
Article 8.
Article 8. Is it Article 8?
Yes.
Article 8 of the...
Proposal standards of the subdivision ordinance.
Right.
And the date of that?
And as of November the 7th, 2019.
As shown on the plan dated?
On the plan dated October the 22nd, 2019. Fabulous.
Right.
I need a second.
I second that.
All those in favor? Five zero.
You have to sign at least three copies. How many do you have?
I think I brought, well, I need to take one, one copy of copies. I have two others.
Okay.
You have these.
Do you have a sharpie?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, my God, good man.
You've done this before.
We can lay them out. We can lay them out right in the back.
It's going to take a short break, right?
And you sign in the same order.
Okay, so the second item on our agenda is a proposed site plan amendment for the Cornerstone Baptist Church at 164 Cobb Road. And the first thing we have to do is determine that this can be heard as an amendment. I wonder if, I wonder if it would make sense just to read Jeremy's...
You can do that for the record and then I also gave you the checklist for the...
So let me read this out quickly for the background. Cornerstone Baptist Church is seeking a site plan amendment to construct a single-story 24 by 62, single-story modular home on the property to provide a residence for their pastor. In 1998, the church received planning board approval for a 5,406-square-foot church and associated site improvements. In 2006, they received site plan amendment approval by the planning board for changes in the footprint and location of the proposed addition. The addition was not constructed and is therefore null and void. The church is now proposing a residential building on the parcel for the pastor. Therefore, they are seeking site plan amendment approval. Again, for efficiency purposes, I've reviewed the application's supporting materials and find the application is complete for a site plan amendment review. Although there are no specific submission requirements for a site plan amendment, the applicant must provide sufficient information for the board to be able to determine if there will be any impact resulting from the proposed changes to the site that would affect the site plan approval criteria outlined in Section 6 of Article 7, which we're going to go through. I believe the applicant, the applicant has done this with the application packet that was submitted. Included in these submissions is an outline of the applicant agent's arguments on the church's behalf regarding the above criteria, which should also be helpful in making your determinations. I've also reviewed the proposal for compliance with space bulk and development standards for the zone and find that the proposal complies with the town zoning ordinance development standards. Applicable town departments have reviewed the proposed site plan amendment and, other than the fire chief, all have no concerns with the proposed amendment. The Camden Fire Chief has concerns about the availability of water for fire protection purposes due to the lack of adequate hydrants in the area. The fire chief is recommending that the building be sprinkled in order to provide for and ensure life safety. Although I support and appreciate the chief's recommendation, there are no ordinance requirements for a residential home to be sprinkled under either local or state laws. So that's Jeremy's thoughts on this. So the first thing we need to determine is that this can be heard as an amendment. That it's a sufficiently small change. Does anybody have any concerns with hearing this as an amendment?
I don't, I do not, because it's a residential development. And so I think it can be handled as an amendment.
So let's just clarify that. It's an amendment to the...
2000...
To the original, which, what was the date on that?
97.
98.
August 18th, 1997 was the date of the plan.
It sounds like there was an original plan. And then there was an amendment to the original plan for the addition, correct? Which didn't get built, that was the amendment number one.
So that's null and void.
That expires and it reverts back to the original plan as the...
Okay.
Okay.
Now we're determining that they're asking for an amendment again.
Yes.
And so is everybody comfortable with her in this as an amendment?
Yes.
I make a motion, we review this as amendment.
It needs a criteria.
To, that it does meet the criteria as amendment for the original site plan.
Seconded.
Okay, and seconded by Jeff. All those in favor? Aye, five zero. Okay, so we need to go through the site plan. If we don't...
They've already determined that it's not going to impact them. Once you agree that it can be heard as amendment, you've agreed that it's not going to impact any of them.
Therefore, we don't need to go through any of the site plan approval criteria.
Just make a final motion and you're done.
So that's really all we're saying is that the submission is... and other than the fire chief, all have no concerns with the proposed amendment. The Camden Fire Chief has concerns about the availability of water for fire protection purposes due to the lack of adequate hydrants in the area. The fire chief is recommending that the building be sprinkled in order to provide for and ensure life safety. Although I support and appreciate the chief's recommendation, there are no ordinance requirements for a residential home to be sprinkled under either local or state laws. So that's Jeremy's thoughts on this. So the first thing we need to determine is that this can be heard as an amendment. That it's a sufficiently small change. Does anybody have any concerns with hearing this as an amendment?
I don't, I do not, because it's a residential development and so I think it can be handled as an amendment.
Mark?
So, let's just clarify that, it's an amendment to the.
Two thousand.
To the original. The original, which, what was the date on that?
Ninety-eight.
August 18th, 1997 was the date of the plan.
It sounds like there was an original plan and then there was an amendment to the original plan for the addition. Which didn't get built, that was the amendment number one.
So that's null and void.
That expires and it reverts back to the original plan.
Okay.
Now we're determining that they're asking for an amendment again. And so is everybody comfortable with her in this as an amendment?
Yes.
I make a motion, we review this as amendment.
It needs a criteria.
To, that it does meet the criteria as amendment for the original site plan.
Okay, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor? Aye, five zero. Okay, so we need to go through the site plan, if we don't.
They determined that it's not going to impact them. Once you agree that it can be heard as amendment, you've agreed that it's not going to impact any of them.
Therefore, we don't need to go through any of the site plan approval criteria.
Make a final motion and you're done.
So that's really all we're saying is that the submission is complete.
Well, you can't agree that it's heard as an amendment unless there is no impact on the approval criteria. And you just voted that this could be heard as an amendment. So if you want to pull that motion back and then look at this and then agree there's no impact, then it can be heard.
See, I would think you'd still have to.
Review even if it's an amendment.
I mean, even if you're amending the site plan review, you still have to review the criteria. I mean, what, because it changes.
So, so the gun's been jumped, so unjump the gun and go back.
Do we, do we want to discuss the site plan approval criteria before we decide that finally that this is indeed just an amendment? Would the board like to go through these?
Why don't we listen to the applicant first on the project?
Good idea, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
We have to do something tonight.
I think you should withdraw that motion and make that formal if you're gonna, because you.
There may be some discussion then.
It's mid-made and seconded, so.
Yeah, so I make a motion, we withdraw the previous motion.
Okay, I'll second that. Are those in favor? So we've got three. Okay, that was a five zero, we've withdrawn.
Start from scratch.
All right.
Now go.
All right, please, would you like to tell us about this project?
So I'm Will Gartley with Gartley and Dorsky and with us tonight is Dale Endrich from the Cornerstone Baptist Church.
All right, I'm Melissa Gartley with Gartley and Dorsky. So the Cornerstone Baptist Church is, as Jeremy stated, proposing to construct a single-story modular home on their property for the pastor. There are no proposed changes to the already approved church and parking lot. For utilities to the new building, they will connect to the existing well that is already servicing the church. And they will also connect to the transformer that is servicing the church. For septic, they will construct a new system as it has been shown on the plan.
Is there a septic tank needed?
This would be a new tank.
It's not the system.
Do we go through all this point or can we ask general questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think now we need to, anything we want to address now, yeah.
What does that well produce now? And how does that equate to like population of it? Like, there's about 60 parking spaces, is it safe to say that there might be like two people per car? So you have 120 in the church in a normal time?
The capacity of the church, we're nowhere near that number right now.
Okay, so the well provides everything that's needed for the church now and would provide for this three-bedroom dwelling, okay?
Is there a kitchen in the church? And is there an existing sprinkler system in the church at this, is there an existing sprinkler system in this church at this time?
If that, if that were being built today, wouldn't the fire marshal require it to be sprinkled?
No.
Really?
No.
A congregational facility?
No, it's one story. It's a matter of construction type and egress, so it wouldn't be required to.
Rockland it would, wouldn't it?
Rockland, potentially a residential house would, except that a modular house has a really good lobby and they can't be required to have sprinklers.
Really?
Really.
You know, in Rockland. Yeah, the modular, modular homes have a totally different set of rules. They're governed by a separate modular housing board at the state and Rockland's, even Rockland's ordinance isn't allowed to apply to them.
The materials would be more flammable.
In the old days, but not now.
This is a modular home.
It is, that's what's proposed, they're looking into the most cost-effective way to do this. And quickest, so manufactured, right? It'll still have a full found, you know, it's gonna have a foundation and.
Seven feet of grade change.
You have daylight basement.
Any significant changes in grading that would affect erosion?
So for stormwater, it will continue flowing from the center of the existing parking lot to the east and west directions. So nothing will change in that. For grading.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, we're kind of taking advantage of that existing slope and creating that daylight basement. It's a relatively gentle slope, it's really actually beautiful back there, it's a, it's a nice hardwood area. I think we included some pictures. So there's a little bit of grading on the sides just to accomplish that daylight basement, but it worked out pretty simply, you can see there's not that many lines on there and we're not having to cut and fill very much.
Does anybody have any, have any concerns with any aspects of access?
I just, it's just not clear where the old pavement ends and the new pavement is proposed, but.
Well, yeah, the parking lot squares off there.
It is square.
It is squared off.
That's really all I wanted to hear, because the, the original proof site plan shows.
The original showed and that during one of the phases when, probably about the only thing that happened during the amendment that didn't happen was some additional parking was added in, but I think that was done just through the code officer as a minor field adjustment. So you can see on the, what is it, southerly end, it still has that shape that it originally was proposed to, but on the westerly side, they just squared that off to get a few extra spaces. So down at that far end, we're just gonna add a little driveway. So it's really where I've got that 50-foot dimension, that's where the driveway starts coming off the parking lot.
I like it, it's easy plowing.
Yeah, it, it actually set in there really well, this was pretty easy to lay out and put in there. It's a beautiful wooded area back there.
Yeah, it'll be a little bit separate from the church too, so it's not like.
We're quite a ways from all the different boundary lines, coincidentally, the westerly of Buttersdale.
And Will and Alyssa, just as you're talking about drainage and wetlands, there's the numbers 12,000 square feet of wooded area will be cleared for a 1200, was that a typo, is that correct? It says 12,000 square feet of wooded area.
Yeah, I think that's about right.
I mean, by the time, you know, we clear around for the grading, create, you know, some space around the building so that none of the trees are hanging over the house.
Does that include the septic system too? That was my next question.
The actual building location is going, there's actually a clearing there, there's not many trees and the same holds true for the septic, the hayfield's gonna go, but there's some trees that are open, not a lot.
Yeah, they picked those spots intentionally.
How do you feel about Chris Farley's observation that a residential fire suppression system would be desirable? Because it's quite surprising how far those hydrants are. Closest one's what, 3,500 feet?
Yeah, it's quite a ways, definitely.
Like what, three quarters of a mile?
It's like many places in town, if there's a fire, they're gonna have to truck the water. It's kind of, is what it is. But trying to add that to a modular would not, not be simple. And as Dale's, you know, we've been cost-conscious the whole way here trying to make this work for the church, so. Adding that, I think would be a burden that they're not looking to take on.
Okay, anyhow, you considered it.
Yeah, when we got the letter especially. You know, we talked to Jeremy about it and we talked with Dale and, I mean, clearly, I think the, the bigger concern for the fire department would be the church.
Well, I understand the concern for a sprinkler system. But, you know, our, our building code does not require that and and I mean, if we start doing that on, on every property, that could be a slippery slope we get into, so.
Yeah, I was just addressing it from a philosophical standpoint and also taking in what a professional firefighter, Chris, says and I like to listen to people who bring that kind of stuff, they know better than we, than I know.
They always would like to have, I mean, that's why Rockland did what they did, Charlie Jordan was the fire chief at the time and he was just very pro residential sprinkler systems. But it's definitely had a lot of negative consequences in Rockland.
It's had a big impact on new construction in Rockland.
Yeah, well, the other thing it did in Rockland is it, it made, it gave the modular manufactured home people a real advantage because they didn't have to comply. So I definitely know of properties in Rockland that have manufactured homes that would have preferred stick-built, but they didn't want to do the sprinkler system. And if you're on a well and you don't have the pressure, then that means adding a tank, a pressure tank. So it becomes more complicated than if you have a public water and in town and it may be a few grand initially if it's a small house to just add this residential sprinkler system.
And was there a consideration for a pressure tank of any kind on this property?
No, it's decided not to, to go the sprinkler system.
My biggest concern would be if the proposed residence was really close to the church, then I could see pushing, you know, the fire chief's push a little bit more, but the separation distance is, it's clear that, to me, the proposed residence is separate from the church clearly.
The other thing is the only reason a residential project is even in front of you is because it's on a piece of property that had a, a site plan review. If this was happening, or we had carved off a lot.
Carved a lot off.
Wouldn't have even had to come to you, but that's not really the way they wanted to do it. I mean, Jeremy worked hard to try to see if he could find a way for us not to even come, you know, because it's just a small house. But it was just cleaner and easier to do it this way, so we're here.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly put it in our conclusion that while recommended, it's not required.
Yeah.
Note that, yeah. Any more questions from anybody about this? Do we need to go through the site plan approval criteria? Is everybody comfortable? I mean, have, are we ready to confirm that this can be heard as an amendment at this point? Were there any more questions?
First to go through.
So we do need to go through the criteria then?
If you're going to, if you want to just make a statement that you've reviewed them and you don't find any that are impacted.
Right.
Then you could address it.
So does anybody on the board feel the need to go through the site plan approval criteria? If anybody does, we will.
We did address them in our submission, just in case.
There's a silt fence drawn right there.
Uh, let's see, make a motion that this is a minor subdivision amendment.
Site plan.
Or site plan amendment and with no with no major changes in the site plan approval criteria. Are you looking for more? So, so, so I find that it meets all the existing site plan approval criteria.
Did it work?
What, Jenny?
That's yours to decide.
And can we then, can we then move, have that motion also, then we'd have a separate motion then to say that we approve it?
Approve it, right.
Okay, so can we follow up on, do we have a second to Mark's motion?
I second that.
That it meets all the requirements of the site plan, is everybody in agreement with that?
We can certainly discuss it before we vote, if we're in.
Yeah, so is everybody ready to vote on that? Yep, okay, so I think Jeff seconded that, so all those in favor? Five zero. So we can now make a motion to approve.
Site plan amendment for the Cornerstone Baptist Church.
I can do it. Do it, okay. I'm making a, I make a motion that we approve the application for the Cornerstone Baptist Church site plan amendment dated October the 25th, 2009. Seconded, all those in favor? Aye. And you've got it written down as Baptist Church, you might want to change.
Dropped a letter.
Sorry, can't help myself.
Didn't catch that one.
Is that Richard, you're usually right on top of them.
It's in the AutoCAD dictionary.
Sign one of those too. We won't find a signed plan.
I know.
One for us and however many we need.
We just need one for the file and probably give one to Dale, so if we could have two.
Two, we need one, so three.
Well, it's good to see you both.
Thank you very much, thanks for coming.
Anybody else have a plan they're not gonna keep that we can have signed?
Sure.
You want the call card too?
Did we adjourn?
Not quite yet, not quite yet. Okay. So just very quickly, before we do adjourn, so it looks like on November 21st, we've got a meeting to look at a subdivision for an amendment to approve plan on Pleasant Ridge to merge two lots.
It's a stormwater pond, I think.
Merging with a neighbor?
No, I think it was like a stormwater pond that was green space that is now gonna be part of a, it might be encouraged.
This is just two residential lots.
Oh, okay.
Do you want more of these?
And Rosie, I won't be here on the 21st, I'll be away for work, so we'll just make sure that Ethan.
Yes, and the other thing, yes, Jeremy's wants to schedule a couple of workshops coming up for zoning ordinance amendments to discuss.
Sounds like the lighting ordinance got bumped again, just as a heads up.
That's not top priority, selectmen are in charge of what we deal with.
And who, who, are we on the air now? Who's gonna be doing that, another committee?
So the workshops, we have an option with.
So the workshops, we have an option with.